Boy, here we go. Well, it looks like they're doing it and they're defunding the police here in Minneapolis. Oh, greetings. It's Max and we're back and today we're going to talk a little bit about the defunding the police. Talked about a little bit over the summertime when they're thinking about doing this with the whole Black Floyd thing and Black Lives Matter, Antifa and all that stuff that's going on. And you know, it's interesting. I don't know what kind of a game that they're playing because there are these ideas out there that, well, government doesn't have the money to pay for pensions and police and stuff, so they kind of want to disband them and rebuild them, but it's like, they're only disbanding the police in really hotbed socialist areas, you know, like Washington and Seattle there and like Minneapolis and LA. And just these real bastions of making everything a crime. Until the whole thing, everything broke down and now they're gonna blame the police on for everything, you know, I mean. And I had, I had stated that it's like, well, good, you know? I'm not a huge fan of the police department, the Minneapolis Police Department. And there isn't anybody who is sticking up for these guys except politicians who don't know any of the police or don't have any dealings with them, right? They're just getting money. They're paid to make their pot talking points or whatever. And you know, it's kind of a good thing because a lot of these people are worse than the criminals. You know, they're protected from being investigated. They're protecting from being thrown in jail because they got a badge. And that's just unfortunate. They, you know, the people, the police reflect the the population and the people that you get into the police force, and it's been this way for 20 years at least. Going back into the nineties is that the type of people that they hire for the police are the people that aren't, you know, if you, they make you take tests for like IQ and stuff, and they're not the people that are like the 150, 175 IQ guys, because they know they're just gonna quit and they're gonna have all kinds of problems. They want the 20-year-old crew cut fresh out of the Marine Corps. And that's who they want for their cop. And of course, the type of mentality that wants to get into that at that age is of course, a guy who's got a lot of programming, he's got a lot of testosterone. Wants to kick ass and take names. And he'll do whatever the boss says, because that's your sarge, right? And that's not really conducive to draconian laws, you might say, where they criminalize everything. You know, and see in Washington State, as a fact, you can get a felony for driving without a license. Alright? Forget having an accident, forget anything like that. You can get a felony, you get your license taken away for not paying child support or something, right? How you gotta get to work. Right? And if you got a cop who's got a beef with you, their little light goes off, they keep pulling you over. Eventually, after like the second or third time they pull you over, they give you a felony for it. Right? The three strikes, you're out laws. Where, oh, oh, disorderly contact, conduct three times. Well, the first time it was a fine, the second time it was a weekend in jail, and the third time, five years in prison. And these are the laws that California has, these are the laws that Washington State has, and Minnesota has a lot of laws like this. And then you put out, you make it incentivized to these, you know, police to go out and rack up the highest charge that you can to get the felonies and all that stuff. Driving without a license, mess the guys up, you don't care that you're throwing him in prison for three years. You don't care that the law is a bunch of BS. You probably get brownie points. Another felon. By Officer Smith. Good job, Officer Smith. Protect and serve, right? So it finally comes to a head where you've got a whole bunch. And you know, from what I know, living here all my life and having dealings with the police, the St. Paul Police Department used to run the entire prostitution thing in Minnesota. Okay, this is like 20 years ago now. But they were the ones who ran it, like a little mafia. It's a good old boys' club. And then you got the Minneapolis Police where a lot of these guys are doing some shady stuff too. And I can just tell by the police in dealing with them over the years, what it was like, say, back in the late nineties to, you know, what it is 10 years ago and what it is today and the quality of officers that you come in contact with. And it's like, yeah. Nobody's got your back, guys. You're a bunch of hoodlums and a bunch of criminals. And you need to be defunded and you need to be thrown out. That's how it is, you know? Is there a greater motivation behind it? Could be. Could be they don't want to pay pensions. It could be that they want to bring in a new system that's more draconian and even worse than the one that's already there. Total possibility, but at this point, just getting rid of the dirt that's there. And we're gonna take a look and see what the kind of officers that are getting let go, should we say. As we take a look at the article. And you know, in my personal opinion, now granted, Minneapolis needs police because of the welfare system that is put in place. Where there is a lot of black people there that don't want to do too much except crime. And they're coming from Chicago. Almost all the black people in Minnesota are from Chicago. And they're all live in North Minneapolis. It's not a race thing, it's just fact. You can look up the demographics. And all these guys, they all come in from Chicago. And it's like, what are you doing here? Every one of them says, oh, I got family. It's like, the Minnesota welfare system is very good. They cut all that stuff out in Chicago, then they all ran to Minnesota. So you know, the police, the inner city police do have a tough job in dealing with that stuff, but when you criminalize every behavior and because it's a poor, a poor black kids hanging out on the corner, right? The police will just go mess with them. And there's nothing that they can, they can do. They can't fight anything. You know, the cop can just make up some charges and off you go. And they're gonna plead guilty to everything in court. That's how the criminal system works. You go in there and they throw a whole bunch of charges at you and say, you're gonna spend the next 60 years in prison for having a joint on you. Cause they'll say, oh, well, we found a gun next to you. We found an empty bag with meth or crack. Was an empty bag, but you know, so you throw all this stuff in there and then you scare the guy. And he'll plead guilty to anything. As long as it's not the 60 years they give you and the 150 charges. So you give him, you know, a weekend in jail and possession, and then you give him five years probation. So you can reel him in anytime you want to, to get that money from the state. For, and that's how the whole system works. And there's shenanigans going on all the time with these cops. They always beat people up all the time. Okay? Uh, the whole Black Floyd thing, it looked to me like they did everything like they were supposed to do with that guy. Now, keep in mind, Black Floyd is a huge guy, 6'8" and like 300 pounds. Yeah, it looked like everything they did there was fine. They find out he died of a drug overdose. But that was, because it was such a political incident, I think what ended up happening was you've got all of the liberals and SJW types who actually want the data and all this stuff, and they probably found out just how many complaints they have from the, one of the whatever the phone number it is you call with a complaint to the police and it just gets added to the pile. Nobody ever cares. Which actually is a civilian group apparently in Minnesota where most of the times it's internal affairs, yeah. Most of the times it isn't. But you find out that there is so many more complaints in Minneapolis than a lot of other cities per capita and a lot more serious complaints. A lot more grievous things going on. And then they're like, well, let's just wipe it out. And city council can't really do that. But they can cut the budget, which is exactly what they did. And they're like, well, we can't disband you, but we're just gonna take your money. And so, you know, we'll see what happens. It's gonna be interesting. And you know, like I said, it's hard to know what the, the game plan is here with other than, it's a test bed, you know, it's a test bed. They have a really draconian, New World Order-y type governor. So you know, that guy's a pedophile. They got stuff on him. Same with Seattle. Same with like LA and, and these, these fruitcakes up there. Totally lockstep with the New World Order agenda and, you know, they all got dirt on them. They're gonna do whatever, but it's like just in certain cities like that. And it'll be interesting to see how it shapes out. You kind of wonder if they're just like, see, let's just see how, how well they do. Right? California came out with a list very recently, the prosecutor put out a thing that says they're not prosecuting or putting in jail anybody for a whole long list of crimes. You know, they're not even, they're telling the police, don't even pull them over. Driving without a license or if they have a warrant or something like that, don't pull them over because we're not gonna hold them. Meaning the police will get in trouble for doing their job. Right? So it's interesting, the same places that you have these lockdown orders and this thing where businesses have to close, they're also getting rid of police. Now, my question is, guys out there who are afraid about getting a ticket for not wearing the mask or getting a ticket if you keep your business open, who do you think is gonna enforce that? The non-existent police force that everybody hates? Are they the ones that are gonna come in and force that? Nobody has got their back. The government doesn't even have their back. I don't know. You know, any people out there, it might be police officers who are watching this, guys. You gotta watch out for yourselves. Cause you might think you're doing what the state wants you to do and you're a good, you're a good little state employee. You are so expendable. You are so expendable. You're like a liability shield for them. Okay, as soon as, as soon as the political swing goes the other way, you're, you're cut. You're cut. Um, so don't enforce stuff that goes against like constitutions, civil rights and all that, because it's gonna burn you. It's gonna burn you. Don't be out there selling drugs in your off time. Employing little street thugs and stuff like that, because it's gonna come back and get you. And you'll probably end up getting a lot more time because you're a police officer. This whole, the, the whole thing for the last 20 years where you can get away with everything is done. It's done. Especially if they're getting rid of all the police. Cause who are they gonna get to replace them? Judge Dredd? Is that what it's gonna be? I don't know. I don't know. Minneapolis City Council cuts police budget for new public safety approach. The public safety approach of getting rid of the police, this is gonna be, now I haven't, I've perused this a little bit. I didn't read it all the way through, but isn't that kind of funny? Our new public safety approach is no police. You know, it works for me, but I am a middle-aged man who can take care of myself. You know, what about the people who can't, you know? My inner socialist comes out. The city council voted Monday to divert millions in programming and staff out of the police department to focus on crime prevention and alternative public safety approaches. The council voted seven to six to allow attrition to reduce the police force from two 750 officers in 2022. A cut of nearly 16%. Now, guys, what that means is they're cutting the budget and they're just not hiring people. Attrition means they are going to make it very difficult for the police. They're gonna hate their job until enough people quit that they can fulfill their budgetary goals. The goal is to make them all quit. That is the goal. Alright? Pure and simple. When they're talking about, we're just gonna cut the budget and attrition? They're saying, we're not gonna lay anybody off. You're just not gonna want to work here. That's pretty, some pretty serious stuff. A major victory for anti-police activists. Well, it's not just activists, the, the voted people. The city councils voted seven to six to get rid of them. That's not just activists. They could be in the pocket of activists, sure. But it's not, you would say, if Minneapolis was the only city that was doing that, you could say shenanigans. But there's some other cities out there that are looking at doing the same thing and they didn't have a Black Floyd outbreak. Seattle, Washington is still burning down and the cops aren't doing anything about anything. Detroit, the police won't do anything to help anybody. LA has announced that they're not gonna go to misdemeanor crimes or pull anybody over or do anything like that, so. You know, it's not isolated. All told, the city council is a sharp reduction from Mayor Jacob Frey's police budget of 179 million. Frey's own proposed budget already cut 12 million from the police. Frey threatened to veto. We continue to stand ready to collaborate and support the safety beyond policing initiatives. But I'm actively considering a veto due to the massive permanent cut to the police officer capacity. Well, you know, it, I'd be, I'll still be amazed if it goes through, but the thing is, is that unless people, the people in the state speak out and go, no, we want our police. It is going to happen in some way, shape or form. You can veto what they want to do all, all day long. But if it's like, okay, well, the police, you can't carry guns anymore. We're just gonna put the rule through that says you can't do that. Who's gonna want to be a cop? Here, yeah, go put that badge on and go down to North Minneapolis. Here's your billy club. You don't get to have a gun anymore. Okay? You know, the move has already been made that this is what we're doing. And you can do that veto crap all you want to, but it is gonna get done in some way, shape or form. Okay? The people are sick of it. People are sick of these tyrant cops. And that's it. And they're not doing anything right now anyway. Every, every cop across America's got their head on a chopping block and they all know it. They're doing as little as possible and the governors and the cities and whatnot are putting them in a very precarious position where they want these police officers to go to churches and hand out tickets for assembling and stuff like this. You guys gotta, I mean, they, a lot of them are doing the smart thing and they're just ignoring the orders and going to go drive around all day and not doing anything. Because that's a rock and a hard place. What are you gonna do? Oh, I'm gonna enforce an illegal law, go out there and then wonder why you're, and then complain as you're such a victim that the people hate you. You know, and then you have to move town, right? Especially in like small towns. I'm gonna talk about my small town too, with this police stuff. Not that my cops are all corrupt or anything like that. But it's out of hand with the system where everything is against the law. And we need 10 police for every person, man, woman and child that are in, in a town. It's not needed, not necessary. It's only because we want to make breathing criminal, literally. Next paragraph. The cuts come amid a rise in gun and other violent crimes, including a 15-year high in people wounded by gunfire. Though the council supporters say shifting the money to the new programs would reduce the equivalent amount of police workload and be more effective at cutting violent crime. If you look at, I actually just looked it up. Minneapolis at one point in time was a fairly high murder rate city. But that's gang violence, where black people are shooting each other. I mean, that has nothing to do with anybody else. Has nothing to do with the police force. They do the same thing in Chicago, the same thing in Detroit, the same thing in LA. Now though, I look at it and the murder rate's down to just about nothing in Minnesota. So I guess all of they have better welfare in a different state and they all left. I don't know. I have, I have no idea on that, but the murder rates, the same as North Dakota per capita, and there's nobody who lives in North Dakota. So we don't need the cops. Right? And what do they do in a murder case anyway? Do they, do they show up when somebody pulls a gun on somebody? No, they, they, they show up to put the chalk around the body. And then they call the coroner to move the body out and then they go off and go arrest somebody for having a joint and throw them in prison for years. The city council was using the only tool it has, a budget scalpel to force a change in the police department about six months after Floyd died under the knee of a cop. In addition to the officer attrition, the council voted 11 to 2 to cut the police department by 5.7 million, which is nothing, right? I think it's interesting though, that there's defunding the police is a majority deal on the city council. Where defunding it by 16% or dropping the force by 16%. It was a 50/50 more or less split, but just defunding them was 11 to 2. I think that's interesting. Uh, cutting 5 million in overtime to fund alternative approaches to public safety is part of a safety for all plan, blah, 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 more nonsense there. The plan would shift some non-violent 911 calls to city staff and pay for mental health professionals to respond to calls 24 hours a day. That sounds like a total way to spend money there, huh? Removing some of the burden of mental health responses from police. Why, why are police even involved in that in the first place, number one? And number two, you're gonna have shrinks when you call 911? I'm gonna call them up and they're gonna go, 911 emergency, tell me about your father. Budget Committee Chair Linnea Palazmano and Councilmember Lisa Goodman voted against the cut. An alternative by Pazmasma, whatever, and an alternative failed, it would have created 4 million reserve fund, blah, blah. The council also voted nine to three to cut 6.4 from the police community service program. And which officers in training work part-time for the department. So it's cut, cut, cut. Everybody's on board with getting rid of the Minneapolis cops. And it's election year, right? Now, keep that in mind, the people that were talking, defund the police in June. Some of them are up for election. And then we just had an election and they're still defunding the police. It wasn't a stunt. People are sick of the Minneapolis cops and they hate them. Councilmember Lisa Goodman called the proposal totally offensive attack on the police chief, saying it would require Aronando to come back to the council and beg for money to cover overtime. Well, you make do with what you got. The, you know, here's the, here's the, and they're all playing that, the money game, right? And the sad fact of the matter is, is you don't need a police officer for every 10 people. Okay? You just don't. Our job is to provide the community with safety as, as we define it. As they define it? And clearly it needs to be defined differently, but right now our system is MPD. It feels like to me that we're trying to do is encourage him to retire, push him towards coming back to us over and over again. Sure. I don't know if the Minneapolis Police Chief is elected or not. It doesn't sound like it. If he gets pushing, if he's getting to pushing to retiring, it sounds like it's not an elected position. Which yeah, get rid of him. He's the one who's in charge of all this nonsense. I am very frustrated and tired of the narrative that if we try to hold this police department more accountable in any way, shape or form, it is somehow a personal slight against the chief, he said. Yeah. Who cares? We're talking about police overtime, police overtime. Here we go. The number of cops has dropped 166 so far this year. Only 700 more to go, huh? Which has driven up overtime just to cover shifts. Why? Why not just have less people out on the street? The number of cops on leave increased from seven in January to 127 now. Okay, the number of cops on leave, that means you did something bad and we're paying you to stay home. Okay? So in the wake of this George Floyd, they're going through and cleaning out all of them. All of them. Hey Bob, it turns out, yeah, we don't like your prostitution ring anymore. We're gonna probably bring you up on charges and why don't you stay home right now while we, while we look into that? From seven people on leave to 127. That's like a sixth of the police force. 127 people? Well, I'll have the numbers up here on a different page. Police overtime was a million bucks, blah, blah, blah. So it doesn't really matter at this point what happens. It could get completely vetoed and whatever, but the point is that this is everybody hates the police and the government does not have the police's back. And the people who are elected to the city council don't have the police's back. So they're hamstrung and totally ineffective, even if they get all their money, even if they hire more cops, they can't do anything. They can't do anything. They're all under a microscope. And yeah, it's interesting. I don't know what the, what the goal and what the game plan is. I'm just very happy and thankful that I don't live in Minneapolis anymore. Cause I was kind of basically in North Minneapolis where I was a couple of years ago. And you can, you can get along out there. It's not terrible. I mean, it's kind of the thing is, is like, you can't be mad that a tweaker runs off with your bicycle in the ghetto. You'd be like, you didn't lock your bicycle up, right? You can't be upset about what happens in the ghetto. You live in the ghetto. If you live in the ghetto, you can afford to live somewhere else. Why do you live in the ghetto? Uh, you can, you can live in a trailer park somewhere much cheaper than you can in the ghetto. Uh, you choose to be in the ghetto because that's all where your boys are at. Right? And so you can just let the ghetto burn down. All the crime in the ghetto, it's like, yeah, well, they appear to be happy with it. They appear to want to live that way. If they want to live that way, don't go in there and go mess with them. If you live there and you don't like it, move out. I don't know what else to tell you. There's always been ghettos. There's always been crime-ridden neighborhoods. Um, locking people and putting them up in prison as, as a sort of like an ongoing, um, uh, you know, treasury bond or something. Putting them out three years over somebody's head for a joint. Or even meth, which is ridiculous. Um, I know a guy who got like two years for an empty bag. Had no idea if there was meth in it or not. Oh, but you know what they did? You know, five years probation and six months in jail for an empty bag. That's what you get. That's what you get. So I want to look at like the ridiculousness of the police departments now. Oh, it's terrible. They're cutting their funding by almost 20%. Okay. Okay. This is Minneapolis. This is just whatever comes up on Google. City has five precincts, 800 sworn officers and 300 civilian employees. So you could say 800 foot cops, I guess, or 1100 people. But they're serving 500,000 people, okay? So it's like an officer every thousand people? Every couple of thousand people? Every 2,000, 1,500-ish people, right? And that's way more than what you need. I think the average is like 2,800, one cop for every 2,800 people. Is sort of like the, the standard average. So they've got a lot more cops than anybody else does per person. Granted, it's North Minneapolis. And, and stuff, but it's a top-heavy system. It can easily lose 15%. It's not gonna hurt them. But in Minnesota in cities that are completely government-controlled, run by the state, run by the federal government, like Minneapolis and like Glencoe. Good old Glencoe with 5,000 people has 11 uniformed officers and three cars. The interesting thing about Glencoe is it's also the seat of our county, so we also have the county police here. And everybody who polices the county, but we still need 11 police officers in our little tiny, tiny town of 5,000 people. Three of them on duty at a time, all the time. Do we, do we need a, a city police force? I mean, I don't know. I think, I think a lot of the people who are watching me now can look at your towns and Google the statistics for what's going on in your town. Do we, do we really need it? I mean, how often do we hear sirens in my town? Once a month? Usually some old person died and it's an ambulance? Where, where's all this crime going on that we need three officers in cars patrolling around Glencoe? Where is all this crime? Why are my taxes gone up 10% every single year since I've been here in the last four years, three years, three and a half? Be coming up, yeah, the last three years, 10%. Actually, the first year it was a lot more than that because even though I purchased my house for $37,000, they decided after I bought it, it's worth 75. They're like, well, that's your estimated market value. And I go, you don't have to estimate the market value. The place was empty. And it was selling for 37,000 and I just purchased it. There's the market value. Oh, well, you're here now, so now it's worth more. Eh, that's the state. Let's defund the, the city people. Well, for defunding all of that, you say, cause no one is gonna have, the person who decided that about my house, no one's gonna have their back. Well, for defunding all of that, you say, because no one is gonna have, the person who decided that about my house, no one's gonna have their back. They wanna defund their job. What are they gonna go cry on YouTube? Just like the police. Who's gonna, who has their back? Yeah, we watched you beat up my friend Jimmy for nothing and didn't even charge him. Or, you know, he was, you gotten, you got, he irritated you and you threw him in jail for a weekend. You know, no one's gonna have your back. You gotta be moral, guys. Is it moral to tax somebody on $75,000 when they just paid 37 for it? Not moral at all. Now I'm paying taxes probably on like 100. It's gone up 10% every year. Side issue. But this is where that money goes. So we can have a dozen cops to watch. This says, uh, population 6,000. Glencoe has been in decline too. Taxes go up, 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 up and the population has gone down, 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 down over the last decade. So this is not 6,000 people. The sign says 5,600 or 5,800 and the sign's 10 years old. So a dozen people for like 5,000 people? Do we got like a cop for every 100 people? Every couple hundred? I mean, it's ridiculous. Oh, we can't defund the police. Think of the children. Ridiculous. Ridiculous. Yes, defund them and get rid of them. Yes. People should buy guns and look out for themselves. And I'm not like a total, total anarchist, but in towns like mine, you pretty much should have your police chief and a couple of deputies running around. And if there's nobody driving around on the streets, they're on call. Because nothing much is going on. It's ridiculous. And all of these cops probably making 60 grand a year. So there's a couple million bucks for them to drive around. In the nicest equipment that the state has to offer, I might add. Because we're a new world order town, agenda 21, with all sorts of, uh, garbage in it. Minneapolis police facing de, defunding. This is from a different, um, a different angle. And I had forgotten what my angle was on this one. This was the one from back in June. Where the city council approved a charter to allow the police department to be dismantled. They didn't quite do that, but then they figured out they could defund them. So they're very, they're very, uh, bent on getting, getting rid of police. California Governor Gavin Newsom issues limited stay-at-home order through December 21st. This is what's going on in California. This is obviously probably somebody with a whole bunch of crimes and, uh, probably involving children, uh, over his head. Right? Who'll just do whatever people tell them to do. And, uh, yeah, he's saying that, um, due to the rise in cases, not deaths or mortality, no. A limited stay-at-home order. California is issuing one. Well, no, it's Gavin Newsom is issuing it. Non-essential work, define that, non-essential work and gatherings um, are gonna be shut down. And they're gonna do it for a month. Now, here's the thing is, in a different tweet in, here in California, it's all about, um, about the, the types of things that the police aren't going to show up for. Misdemeanors, burglaries, theft, all of these things. But we're gonna have a stay-at-home order and who's gonna enforce that, right? And the police that, it shows down here, the police to say that, yeah, we're not, we're not enforcing any of this stuff. We're aware of it. But it's like we're gonna defund the police and then we're gonna come out with orders that say we're, we'll ticket you if you wear a mask. It's like who's, who's gonna, who's gonna do that? I don't know. I don't know if it's, you know, is, is it kind of a thing just to see how much people are gonna put up with it? Because I think the whole thing is laughable and I've always, I thought it's been laughable since March, man. Since March. It's just, is this a test to see how clueless people really are? When you put out in the paper, nothing is criminal anymore. You can go do whatever you want. But wear a mask or we're gonna give you a ticket. I don't know. Like I said, if you're not woken up by now, I don't wanna talk to you. I really don't. I don't have time. I don't have time to red pill people or, or anything or let anyone know what's going on if you're still walking around huffing and puffing in a mask as you ride your bicycle down the street. Um, you know, I'm getting at the point now where I think eugenics has its place. Where if you're that dumb to take the vaccine, take the vaccine, take it, take it, take it. Just don't give it to your kids. But a person who thinks that the vaccines and things are a great idea, go take them. Take them. Take two. That's what I think about that. For something I might do a video on, might not, I'm actually looking at, uh, probably potentially going on a state for some work. So I don't know how many more videos I'll be doing here, but I do wanna talk a little bit about, uh, the mouse utopia. And I probably will do a live stream on it. It was in a study they did back in the 1970s and 72 and they're trying to figure out how they can contain people and still keep productivity out of them and kill them when they want, you know, because they're the, they're the kings, you know, we're talking Rothschild people and probably above that. So of course they did all these experiments with different animals and this is the mouse utopia spear, uh, experiment. And anyone who wants to look at that, you know, Google it up and, uh, and read about that. Um, but what's going on with the police is, is, is more or less a symptom of the mouse utopia thing. Now, there isn't any small towns that I know of, towns like mine that are defunding the police. Mine should defund its police. But it's the, the big Minneapolis. It's Detroit, LA, Seattle. Just these crazy communist regime mouse utopia places is what it is. Where they're like, eh, enough of this stuff. Defund, defund, defund. But your small towns and stuff, they're, they're going along fine and they're probably very happy with the police. And someone came in with the bright idea to, to, to kick old, to kick old Joe out of his job as a deputy that he's had for 25 years, there probably would be, half the town would stand up and say, no, you're not doing that. Right? It ain't so with the mouse utopian places like Minneapolis and Seattle and Detroit, Chicago. And I, I'm interested to see what their, what their goal and their plan is, but you know, I think in the meantime, it is a good thing. Um, because here honestly, if the, if the police that are getting, losing their jobs, if they're worth anything as human beings, they will just get a job in private security. However, unfortunately, most of them are dirtbags, right? That are unemployable in any other job. So they're gonna end up prison guards, but they're shutting down all of the prisons. Right? Because there's no money, COVID money for prisons. They're letting everybody out of prison. Um, so these people now are unemployed because most of them aren't able to find a job, but let's be honest, the people that are actually good um, smart police officers that have, uh, conscience and morals and try to do the right thing. Um, they're gonna have no problems getting a job, private security, none. So it's a good thing. We'll clear them out and then maybe we'll have a nice police department, one that functions, one that's not uh, crazy tyrannical, um, for a few years before it goes back to, you know, the old system of the brown shirts or the Gestapo or whatever we're gonna, whatever we had before. I mean, I think at least for a little bit of time, it's gonna be a positive thing. But what I am astounded at is that at the end of the day, it's a tax decrease, okay? Which is something that you almost never hear about in government, is reducing taxes. And yes, it's only to the police department. I'm sure that 16% is going to off to some slush fund for, for something. But it is a tax, tax deduction or a tax drop, right? You're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna be like, well, you defunded 16% of your billion-dollar police agency. Where is that money going now? Right? I don't know. Doesn't happen very often, doesn't happen very often. So that's what I got on that. And, uh, you know, for now, I'm outta here.